Good evening. Thank you all, group, and welcome to Newport Education regular meeting. We have a roll call. Do you need to be here? Here.
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 All right, you all joined in pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands by a nation new, visible, free, and just. Now we have the moment of reflection by having two our physicians, our staff, and our parents make their thoughts. They will have a great and successful year. All right. First on our agenda is Dr. Jenny Watson, who is here representing Educating Newport. She's our real president, please. And invited. To talk to us tonight about Read Ready Newport. And that's all due to be here because it is a revolution that the board starts to support. The city's effort in this Read Ready initiative, which is geared towards early childhood education. And so if our parents, our students are really not committed to just the discussion involved, I thank you all for being here. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Yes, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Chief of Education, for having me here. Yes, so I'm representing Educating Newport. But this is not about educating Newport. This is really about our earliest borders. It is the education for our families, our babies, our infants, toddlers, all the way up through early childhood, right? Till they're ready to get five years old, three, four, or five, just that's what they do in our schools. So why is this important? Why are we talking about something called this focus on early childhood? And so really, this line is about why children's brains are really going to be important. And it's about the evolution. Eighty percent of a child's brain is developed before they're three years old. Ninety percent is developed by the first five years. So Read Ready is shaped by how kids experience good or bad. That's the foundation for future learning and well-being, and this is really a big opportunity. What the visual shows is really about the synapses and the neurons making connections from Newport all the way up to the dolphins and supramotor with no way better than me about how that happens. But I'm going to actually skip the different slide that I'm going to go to and show instead of this one. Let's see, this one will be the correct one. And I don't know what's working there. Okay, so what is Read Ready? So Read Ready is a city-led initiative, focusing on improving human awareness. It is a comprehensive strategy, starting at prenatal care through age five, then incorporate child care, home care, and public preschool about ensuring that every child is ready for kindergarten. So why are we talking Read Ready? In our readiness, only forty-eight percent of students enter kindergarten ready to murder. In our university, that line behind Kentucky average to four, like forty-four percent of students are ready to murder. So when you think about that, that means that we need an urgent and unified solution to that thing. So Read Ready is not about human readiness alone. It is more about building strong children, strong families, vibrant communities, and a better future. The other interesting thing about something is Read Ready is there's no one agency who owns and supports infants through early learning. There needs to be a coordinated network. You think about first steps, Head Start, right? There are all these wonderful partners, but we needed to coordinate that so that there would be a unified network how kids and families are being served. So really, that again is why we're talking about Read Ready. So we have to be four points to think about. One, we know we want to ensure our readiness and educators will have a better. We want to know, are we meeting the goal or not? The city leaders want to know, are we meeting our goal or not? So that's our readiness. Then if we're right there, community partnerships. There's such a large group of organizations and people circling support to the city of Newport, including Head Start, Easy Learn, Rankin's Learning, R.C.A., Charon Hospital, city officials, Global Library of Family Businesses, local nonprofits. So while that is great, and we're all in this playground, trying to re-balance our problem, that's where the third rule really matters, is aligning informed behavior efforts to prepare children out of their school life, on learning and well-being, and then also teaching and helping help. We're trying to build the script of awareness for parents to talk. They have the power to give a chance for a teacher in providing them with quality. So we thought about it from the beginning, because we have Read Ready Newport, and then we're getting along with the other states. And the one that was coming to the starting, that should have all been in our city. So we want every city to be local, but these three quarters are the same. Start Strong, Be Free, Work. So we're looking at what happens when we work in Newport. Working opportunities for both kids and adults, and what that looks like. And then community partnerships, again, that whole ecosystem of people aligned and united. So now, what does that mean for Read Ready Newport? So the city has done a remarkable job, and I'm going to introduce the commissioner, Ken Rattan, in back of the room. He'll come up with the idea here for a moment. But we have been organizing on workshops and halls, we'll have a couple of ones, to really establish what I would call the teacher domain and interact with the worksheet where folks have been saying, what's already happening in Newport? And then who is owning that resource level? So on the left side, it's just on the left side of Start Strong, are all the activities that are currently available in the city of Newport. And the right side, who is owning those level responsibilities? Cover two, learning opportunity, again, left side activity, right, and who's responsible? I did highlight the Club of Kids University put stuff to growth because this is something that you could do, like just look at this today, that we're providing funding to support everything that's open in the member cities for an app for five years for reading and reading. So think about it like, if anybody doesn't do Lego, if you want to learn a language, and you say, I think the practice is ten to fifteen minutes a night, that's exactly what Club of Kids University is. Ten, fifteen minutes, and they're aligned in the times of reading and you're advised how it's worked. So that's probably a little part of it. However, the community partnerships, again, what is permeating out there, and we're going to want to do that. So once you kind of did the work as a team to get them all actively and responsibly identified, now we kind of think, what is next? What is happening now? So if you can, Hey Y, will want to present a new program, a new mission to the city of Newport, and then a planning grant. It's not the only grant to come for this one. It is to start a planning budget that we hope to happen by September fifteenth. Read Ready Newport team will continue to need to develop this plan even further. So what we solve is just, we put a data dashboard in place. We want to have calendaring and monitoring events, thinking about climate impact, and who's doing what where, and that's all kind of coordinated into a data dashboard. And then, of course, we've been heavily involved with our great allies here at the school level. Newport Primary, Newport Elementary, they are already agreeing to serve as a college. Everything is approved, has been a great partner to volunteer, to get over situated to go with the cities and the communities and to do ASQs, or lack reading and training and other things. So my favorite slide is always what was successful. Because we got to measure what kind of deal we're being successful. All by May twenty-sixth, August of twenty-fifteenth, the city is here are related by five percent showing that this is the area. We want to engage at least fifty new families in monthly or frequent early learning activities in Newport that will be tracked through design and participation logs, because we want the data to tell us are we really meeting the needs of five, fifty new families? We want to train at least twenty parent vendors and ambassadors, documenting the new training certificates or engagement records. We want to increase the ASQ three. If you don't own the ASQ, the Agent's Engagement Questionnaire, say that we're at the hospital, and the parents of us would say, every child should have that question before they turn two. And the way to kind of find out, any reflex, develop that language. So that's a huge goal, is to increase that by at least twenty more, and noted through the Health and Growth State Database and KEES database. Again, we're getting numbers from the governor's office and local KEES teams here in Newport. Connected effective engagement with five Newport childcare providers and five in-home daycare providers. If you didn't know, there are fourteen childcare known childcare centers in Newport. That's between facility-based and community-based. So we're visiting those fourteen on September the third. And the way to share information, again, try to get a residency, and then build a network kind of commission, which I'll get from this. And then finally, increase participation in all departments of imagination library in Newport. Our current data is thirty-eight, twenty-four percent of the families who are working by opportunity in Newport. Which is smaller. The Kingle County Library goal of increasing fifty percent of our target population, which is birthed by here in Newport. So that's what our goals are, and we have many, many more, but that's just to make start what this looks like. So I would like to invite Ken Rattan, who I have at the city. Again, this is important, and I still want to invite him to the city, our normal team.
I'm going to go ahead to the city. We really do realize that they don't belong to the school. They don't belong to anyone but ours, and it does make a difference. At the meeting, when we had the resolution, I recall the line, the timer, Barack Obama standing up front, who was signing the ACA, behind, underdose of the microphone, the slide. Joe Biden said, this is a big deal, you know? And I usually never work, and I usually say, oh, but this is a big deal. We don't work together, but what do we do? And when you want to, you know, tell somebody you really like, you give them a pin, don't you? So I have a pin for Ramona, I'm going to get one for the rest of you, and I have one for Matthew as well. Director, and this is two parts. We're in this together. I'll be there at everything that's needed to happen, and I will participate.
And then one last word, speaking of Ken's participation in Mike's marriage, Wade, or Seth, and Phil Griffin, myself, we're off meeting on Friday because we want to do a huge launch party. And Phil Griffin is always helping fund that as well, for Read Ready Newport to truly launch. And so we're looking at some activities in October, and hopefully, we know that hopefully, it's really a next week to have the implementation of loud and proud before all stakeholders, sharing with the community, versus coming in there for our kids. So we're to comment on that. Any questions, comments?
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a question. If you're doing a track, I mean, how do you know what's happening? If there's some children that are glorified or something, how do you, how do you know what's going on?
Straight. So they're all of all data sorted. It shouldn't have had to be sure that Ken and the owner of that data protects the data. But there are levels of sharing that can occur. So that would be very mindful of how this is going to handle that. But working with Salem and, I would just say, the low-end group here. Salem, now every baby that's born in Kentucky, that's supposed to have the positive Salem and Oklahoma chance. So what, in working with the community, operating in the director of the community, now every baby that's born at this state hospital will get enrolled in the Department of Education Library before they leave the hospital, through the Kingle County Library, it's coming together to follow the QR code they can use. So that, that data is now tracked as well. So we know the baby's zip code, we know where the, where the, because the address, every month, a baby gets a book in the mail. So those addresses, so the library has some information, right, and then, and other sources have information. The idea with this collective database is really, this is social impact work. It's not clean, it's messy. But the idea that we're looking to raise the table as a dashboard, only the aggregate data that's needed for public can be shared. So we're trying to create these sources together in a very protected government way, sort of this dashboard. So that's what we're doing. We're still in negotiations with a community facility that, um, competent in organizing something.
I'm confident, I can count all of them, and Jay, without this, I was truly impressed with the number of people from all over the world supporting this, and the reasons why.
And honoring all the egos in the childhood for that, you know, as well as schooling, preschool, of course.
So I do have a question. Does the ASQ test, the kid we're getting, is that going to be made available to preschool teachers when we do start?
Yeah, that is, and you're talking about preschool here, right? Yes, yes, that could be something we would like to happen before. For new day, you take the ASQ through six, there's a six block gap. Our daycare is, our daycare in Newport, the one that, oh, I agree with her, do ASQ through Easy Learn. So there are ASQ in your kids already. Like she said, it's really birthed for you, and they can do that, and so they get birthed by, because when they come to us, we use birthing and birth hell, which is a little water creation, which is the little house. She probably thinks too. But anything really, you're right with us.
I just wondered if there was a way, I'm looking for where they start when they go into the programmers before they are when, you know, they're in fourth, before they are when they start in the birth place. Is there a way that we can track that? There's definitely, you see, you know, if there's improvement, if this process is working.
I think that would happen in collaboration. Yeah, I think before they're in preschool, they're screened in the first thirty days when they start. So you have to, like, so all you can write on the screen, and then they get a video, and then they need to hear. Then as part of that screening process, too, as they are getting ready to come to preschool, one of the questions that I've asked is, what type of links, so to speak, was the child in prior to preschool? So whether it was childcare, whether with them, whether it was with a family member, all of that. So that data is kind of a key one.
And I came here, in our meetings, the lady that is with St. Elizabeth, wants to increase the number of kids that they give a, a student test in Newport, because the tests that are being taken does not match a population. So they are, they have to be leading the initiative. They want to know how they can reach our families when the baby's born. You know, because, you know, we have a prolonged time, trying to learn learning, I know they finally stop, but this is not too late for us to maybe consider those parents of somebody else's. So that is something that, you know, because, you know, this is huge, because we as a district, we're very hard to catch these kids. We play catch-up a lot with a lot of our students, because they go, come here to Reading, you know, Kitty Run to Reading. And this catch-up continues in high school. And so we want to stop this. We want to, our kids to come to school Kitty Run to Reading, so that we can, you know, help them be successful, help them become the best version of themselves. And it starts in, in this program. So I am really excited about this opportunity, for the family, and hope that, you know, this collaboration will, will be huge. And in two or three years, we'll start to see the impact, you know, with our kids and with parents, and they're going to see that they are the first teacher. And a lot of them don't have that background, because no one was, you know, it was not happening for some reason. We have bodies, and St. Agnes, and foster, and, you know, have wisdom homes. So, you know, this is a great opportunity to help our families, because most families want their children to be creative. They want them to be successful. And we just want to give our parents and our families the tools they need to help them.
So I can look back at one part of the thing. While I think this program is phenomenal, and I would recommend it to Newport, don't want us to forget about our other middle-aged kids, high school kids. Need to be thinking that way, we can help them flourish, because they struggle.
And that is helpful.
That's.
It's more, yes, you know, this conversation, even well high school. So it's a lot of identity, innovation, expansion.
That's great, thank you.
To his advantage, all the principal, educated, educated, wise, and the primary. All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Rattan, and Dr. Watson, with the presentation. Do we have anybody on the next page, comments? So you have someone to sign off. If you'd all find time, as you can go, I'll give the first school. You need to be aware, this is probably the best year. And I've been here this, only first year, this is probably the best year. We've turned our paths all the way out to the hair. We had probably the best principal relationships with principals we've ever had. And I know we're the best superintendent we've ever had. I've seen more than, you know, in just the short time that I have, all the rest of them come on. It gets very long, so thank you for everything you've done, and concern, and care, and got to keep these principals. We have a fine way with the full, full of essential. So that's going to be a big job for you to do more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, next on agenda is the board members. For meetings July seventeenth, July thirteenth, and August thirteenth. It's an opportunity to review the minutes. Any questions or corrections here? Not any approval to approve those minutes that have been. Is the move in second all in favor? All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is the financial report, Ms. Snap.
Ms. Snap, she has a report. Do you have an answer? Any questions?
I, I don't know anyone else.
My question.
And just, you know, for the audience, you know, in our training, as board members, you would talk to, you know, meet with the staff, get our questions answered, and that is to make our meetings more efficient. But anytime, you know, our documents are available online on our district websites. We want to have see the links or the paperwork, they are available to. You know, we typically ask questions, you know, about the payboy list that we approve, and the, um, the financial report, that just tells us our income, certainly, today. So those typically the questions we have. So anyone have any questions for Ms. Snap, everybody that has time with information?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for your ability.
Yes, thank you, yes. We have five new budget meetings that has been, I think it's, you know, not planned in the past for this year. We meet with the financing once a month individually. Just because of open media, how are we able to meet and not meet more than two? So we typically meet with the finance department once a month, just to get, you know, get a paper, what's going on, all your track that's projected, and we will continue to do that, if we combine the practice going forward. All right, the motion to approve the payment reconciliation statement to validate, and the monthly invoices.
Second.
Is the move in second all in favor? The other attachments we have here is administrative expenses, the credit card statement, and the balance sheet statement, and those are just information only, and will actually be verified. Okay, all right, Mr. Atkins.
So I had several items on the business, and I, yeah. So first, attached to my agenda is a report, be careful. True leader. And then the other items that I would like to highlight in the new business, one are change orders for the safety projects, which I think goes very quickly. One is that their heading dates are pending on both sides of the concession stand. Behind concession stands, but there's staffs who are on that backside. So that's a one change order, and confirm, there's one with the code, sixty tall. Should we go? Next, they're installing conduit from the bleachers or the breath box over to the concession stand, and they can put in the security cameras, and also the credit card machines. We still need to run the fire alley cable, which is rather important to go to, on that. But that change order is to run that conduit. And then the other change order is put an access door, so that we can basically see if there are plumbing issues, if there are leaks or electrical issues, or go run an access door in there, so that we can tear a lot of stuff out. We just have the access door. Those are the three change orders. One thing I have to add is still running down. The other item is my professional birth plan, it's on my new business. One of those on two areas, one is cultural, sorry, cultural and managerial leadership. Cultural with understanding of the issue of community, how to maintain their state, how to connect with their tradition, and work forward, and so that we can achieve our individual goals. And then under managerial leadership, it is developing refining processes and systems for questions, and second, problem solving, immediate expectations, and working out under burning issue. The last two areas, there are a lot of areas, I've focused on, but we focused on everything. The other items that I would like to highlight this month, it's been a incredibly busy month. It's that, one is that we went to National Highway, from the police department, or the office of state. We had a district campaign, getting paid, everyone that went to that, served a lot of credit, that was raining. It's, it was a problem, so straight to them, they hung around, they didn't get any. We also had a community on walk with the eight mister, the fact that they phenomenal, how they can use the day. Complimenters, provide food for us, and for lunch, of course, if they buy anything here, do a book read. And then opening day of staff on August the thirteenth, says to start practice for everyone. And then we move to the auditorium, we recognize our staff members, and also our staff members receive services for five. And then also, I had an opening day message, really focused on district history, and the opportunity for us to really make a positive change. And then moving forward, we started to go with students. That was on August the fourteenth, we had a really positive, strong start this new year. And as always, if we had issues, the goal is to move quickly, and the issue that we do. We are going to have those, anytime, we have to lower our teaching students. to have those, anytime we have to lower our teaching students, here's our new school year, uh, when we do have another second charter. Uh, next, let's, I want to talk about some tax, to do business. My recommendation for orders to adopt a compensating rate of seventy-seven cents or a hundred dollars for parking, and for the vehicle tax, nine ninety-three cents or a hundred dollars. This will generate about same amount of money as pretty this year, and we'll make some money. First, our budget for the school year is based on the compensating rates we budgeted this year, and our projection for this year are positive concerns. Second, I'm confident that our team that we have, stewards of the money, we're also playing to see a significant amount of potential money. And then next, I'm making this recommendation, there's one thing I did on the, work, local district tax rates, and this is last year, uh, new board staff rate of seventy-seven cents for a hundred dollars, which is around the shares, going with eighty-two cents, paying at eighty-seven, or Thomas a hundred and one, so. And then the next year, I'd like, next, I'd like to, the arc machine increase and cost on a few areas, one is the salary set increase, so it's moving year to year for employees, energy cost increase, insurance, and also bond interest. And the reason I'm sharing that information is, next year, if we get to this point, or one, we're. We do get to point next year.
Um, on the home visit time, I have a conversation with people, communities and the parents, and they would like to know if you could revisit the time, sort of time length, or if you think about that next year.
Our birthday, which is, I thought it was a little different. Try to leave my, 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 my.
If you read enough, you know, so, that was something, something asked, who wants to shoot, and how long this is though, you know, how long this is.
I thought it went really well, I wanted to say the numbers, I don't think they even thought that, they didn't, the overall feeling, just from the very beginning, there's a base, and just to set up the steward, the vision of everyone starting in every school, in the gym, started offering messages, extremely liberating, being one after every school, in the bunch, physical audio collaboration and the culture. I thought it went very well, if we did that. And I want to thank you for just letting us know that you were being proactive about this, and having you protect the students, Sam. Land's insurance.
And I thought your, um, performance goals was well by, and it was nice and touch to send, I said, where we can see where your dishes and then where our dishes too, and see how they, they need in the middle. As far as the compensating rate, I think you put a lot of power into that, and I understand that, um, where you're coming from, why you don't want to take it yet, um, even with the projected increases, like the selling, the, that, so I think your management and our mind will be key this year to make sure that we don't have to take a harder pick here. About all.
All right, thank you. Good report, Ms. Snap, good report. Um, that is the curriculum department.
So I gave you all the work for this.
Yeah.
And I was like, yeah, I haven't got any question, but also, we, we, we'll see what's in the future, on anything.
It was very impressive.
Yeah, I haven't given a really much, um, the only thing that I'm wondering is, um, so we haven't, haven't gifted, entitled before we go out, so this is my main position for the students and offering services to these students throughout the trip.
Yes, so we're, um, there is a lot of our processes, but the one I'm doing, operating, certainly send an amazing job, really headed this right now. They're going to test all four tiers, and then teachers are able to recommend students to be tested as well. It's not always positive, there are, there are assessments developed, there's some on the dance portion, or, um, leadership skills, so they will be tested, and Mr. Betts, when we are, where he is, our guidance teacher, he will practice to assist best students on a rotating basis, and he might be kind of, I think, more often, we will get a primary school data, but twelve primary talent, so we got to, it didn't happen, so there will be project based, and we're very excited.
I'm really excited to hear. So how all these policies are, are considered and being their approach for the struggling, and it just plays me the water in the world, to name, it's hard to challenge them to be the more than all, so maybe fourteen months on to that.
I agree with you, because we have a lot of really smart and leadership focused kids, it's been a lot of attention.
Nice bow on presentation.
That question, I mean, it says, now, discussion about S A P A C, do you have any knowledge about?
Well, they are, it's not a contract, so my understanding is that, um, the presentation had two sections, and earlier it was called intensive exam, one is focused on unusual portion, one focused more on, um, maybe a testing portion, and then they said separately, the recommendation they had, and the recommendation for S A P A C, that's what I understand. However, there's been a formal protest, we don't know who's wrong, and, um, until that's officially done, we don't go around purchasing anything, to all prepare for the S A P.
It's nothing else, like I, it's not like, it's in New York, they look at G D A.
I actually just want to explain that, these things require all students.
Are really, are.
Of course. Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just. But that being the bar for it, so. It's not conscious, it's just, you know, S A P A C, it's changing always.
I think that's very grand, though, we, we just really wanted to take this stance.
Um, now, we need to get some information here about the K Y C L, three five brands, and the Lucy brand techs, and. And glad to see that you all are being trained, kept the rest of the back and back, um, all of that, um, we, to my understanding, did we get the gear on the brand? And so, anybody have any information on that, what we're doing with it?
I don't think so.
So, well, we will look into that, see, uh, what, what options are available for our students under that brand, uh, be great. Very excited about, our goal is to want, you know, stepping us in the box and doing more than we're our kids. I think last year, I, you know, talked about things, culture of success, you know, we need to create a culture of success, not just academics or behavior, you know, how we treat one another, and based on what I hear, we're, we're on our way to that culture of success, creating a culture where our kids will look out to society, and all of the people to handle the monster, and it seems to be like, my, 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 thank you.
Okay, if you can go left, add some.
We will, thank you.
Very good.
All right. Just always, it's just great. And you can, oh, you can, that's a very good report. The people personnel report, do you have any questions? It was a very good report, you know, I enjoyed the reading, um, all the details that you, um, provided. It was really good. It is our intention to, um, have one on our website, so the enrollment data will be updated as well for graphics, um, monthly. The attendance will be updated daily, and then we will also have, ended each attendance month happening overall, so that the parents can see by grade level, how they are doing, how their child is doing, uh, grade levels, doing their school, compared to others, and that's really just making very visible our likely important goal of nine five percent. And see, we did really good. We, we did a, and I was, right, my school, you know, we, um, twenty-nine, twenty-five school year, and the price. And that's from, uh, from the little, seeing, and I believe, uh, one of the quarters, had went through and listed all the years of attendance, and what those rates were, so that was the highest mark for my school. Officially, they are already involved in the best art they've had, within the first ten days of instruction, and today, you remember. Very highly, uh, to the word, that, that all of our schools are doing, especially the high school, and we all know that in world attendance, begins in preschool, early childhood, and, and it really is a soft silver.
I thought it was very good view, I think we have the highest number of students in the second grade, and to put a plus up to have another teacher, so that was really insulting.
Yes, they, uh, we had been monitoring second grade attendance since May, and it was hot, um, and when we looked at the, at the year of the sideways decision-making council applications, there were a lot of online shares. What we were noticing was that, based on the student data, we were really able to bet in third grade, the number of teachers. When we looked at fourth grade, we were, in third grade, we were looking at their academic scores, and how far away from proficiency or grade level are they? Then again, um, for those students that cap is not closing, looking specifically at fourth grade, for those kids, what are we going to do differently? We've also been investigating over time, um, specifically the second grade, what is halting, um, our students, we have a priority data in the second grade, that's computers who wasn't learning at the end of the third, and so, uh, taking a more aggressive approach to that, so third grade is now self-contained, so that's going to be different, hence more light, what's being done at the primary school, so it could be the best development issue. Um, we have a smaller last slide, uh, usually at the primary levels, so we're absolutely, you know, we're keeping that in the third grade and fourth grade, now we really have to do that for second grade, looking at needs, um, and at the same time exploring with all those options, how are our kids, and ended this school year, for the future decisions that the board had to make about how our schools are, and how those are very, so this is going to give you additional information to be able to make those recommendations. But absolutely, we have got to get our kids ready for it, regardless of, you know, first and three, tenth grade, second grade, we absolutely don't know, and in the future, it's absolutely possible.
There is potentially, we could have some students.
There is, there is, it's moving in currently, and I do know that it's still online, we have calls, um, resident enrollment, and that's just to make sure that, you know, our class appropriate, we're just now getting, um, you know, that aggravated, the principals are looking through that, um, and then we'll have more information to be able to inform that, um, but I did also include the percentages from all residents, I had those numbers, I didn't share the numbers, because in some sources are less than ten, and so I didn't want to be able to identify the percentages, so there is a condition there, but the percentages are there, and again, that's just, we're wanting to make sure that we are quickly, um, fitting to those kids, including new students within, being able to, I think that is screens as soon as possible, so to know the fact where they need to be, you know, by. And I recommend you on your investigation, uh, residents, you know, this is kind of mission, because we are constantly approached by people, including seeing that we have this large network, showing that all of the community, and so being able to share with them the actual, um, investigation interest that to determine the course of this, and see as well, so that these side of the deals helps us on your approach and power, to assure that you all are doing the diligence, to wear that. And so this is the, that we currently have, um, we are, we would be able to, to be able to report that monthly, some of those will be a continuation, for example, we have guardianship issue, there was some work with the cabinet, and of course, some of that as well, both parents, um, and as guardianship is awarded, that may or may not change, um, which helps residency, um, but absolutely, I'm excited with that, we have three living in, two in September, that are just going to be a monitoring process, and, you know, I have two more families today, that are represented in those, those six separate rivers, um, and we're, we're going to close that off in additional cases. Thank you, I did see something in the video report about site based. Yes, so, um, we have a site based decision making, when new form independent schools several years ago, they tend to see the five, so it's more just for the success, at that point in time, each school involved did, uh, lose that site based decision making. Yes, yes, so we had these two schools with advisory councils, um, that, that had been active, um, and then you'll hear that they're actually near, to where, uh, the primary school and the intermediate school were eligible as twenty twenty-four, the high school where it's eligible, and so, I have been working with a couple of different divisions, one is a Dr. Morales, at the Department of Education, um, and another one is, uh, Ms. Swanson, she is also with the Department of Education, more in finance, more in the C D M, I've also been working with our Kenny Davis, our director, Mike Ross, who is, um, very closely being expert in things related to Rogers rules of procedure, and really what is small savings. So the problem I have, we could, we could do the determination that the best case forward, or best way to do forward, is to go and borrow feedback from all of our faculty sets, and some of our schools, we need to do so for our parents as well, we're going to take that information, and then bring that to the board for your decision in the month of September. Our preference is to get that too early in September, uh, however, we do have to wait until, I would need a schedule, and those are already on schedule, uh, for the month of September, as soon as I have it, Mr. Baggins will have it, and be able to share that, um, then you will need to make a decision, it is completely out to the board, you'll be looking at that detail, and then deciding whether people are going to return, size these council students, or the majority, or whether it remain in the board of education through the secret. So there are posted lots of them, and those will lead us into our staff, so that they can get this information.
Jane, that is impossible, speaking, how we contributed in the past.
I honestly don't have that information, I can see maybe some, friends are back, who's been here for several years, who'd like to have more of that information, uh, but I can have it. Yes, when you go into C F S, that's the procedure.
So what is the difference between self-based council and.
So the advisory council itself is getting more feedback, uh, working through the principal. I think the advisory council, our, uh, don't have an official model. Uh, it is comprised of teachers, who usually look at at least four teachers, uh, no less than two parents. Um, there is the need and requirement if you're going to implement them, to hold minority representation as well. And at the secondary level, it is encouraged by students, all those that, within the advisory units. They are, uh, with site based, they are the legislative policies and procedures for their school. So one of the, the biggest examples would be line six. So, uh, where currently the principal is deciding which rooms would be classroom space, which would be hall space, how many classrooms would be used. And then they set up actually the verbatim to the site based, and then they make those decisions. So there are innumerable policies, they're, they're very, uh, aligned with the board policies, um, similar in many ways, but the decision making would be at the school.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, next, the special education.
Hello, this is your name, is your person, for your report?
It is exciting to see that our students have really given stop to it again, and I like the way you broke down the percentage.
And I did indicate the current non-resident student population. And we're both participating in the unified course again. They're actually paired up, and they train together, and then they compete together as two of them, on the team, uh, and it builds the friendship and the vision in the school.
Will we still be participating in the scheme?
Yes, we are playing off, creating just, that's what I'm thinking, that will be unified.
Okay, next, we do involve businesses, there is, and then, uh, we have new businesses. We have incentive agenda, either one through thirteen. Here, background on his request for approval. I do know that Mr. Baller has looked at this agreement with the Department of Juvenile Justice, and the K E C F A agreement that does our regional school. Say that right?
But, if you want to D J J, uh, Matt, Matt, Matt collaborated the job with the state, and rethought what was required, they were to assist, you know, using instructional systems and. Thankfully, that, that they should not have been, so. It was, rethought what it needs to be, and I want to put it back, that the, the lady in D J J, seemed to really want to work with the board. They should be able to do that, like they want on the job. These conversations happen, you have to know that.
Yeah, I know, it's very detailed, student teacher relationship, so, that's his version.
Yeah, I mean, they do, they, they're the way to you all, real life.
Yes.
And they sit us, and we need to provide. To, 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 to stay high. Very well, I should shoot.
Any more questions regarding this agreement? Alright, and so the decision at the primary due to the large class in second grade. Uh, and then the emergency education for white going into classroom. Any questions, just definitely from the decision at first, is not a bad decision, correct? Correct? Alright, very good. Any questions regarding that?
No, but are we bullish, I don't actually, we would be, unfortunately, so I've been so excited, working on daily.
Alright.
So we include primary and large, what are the numbers now?
They're, they're three over in each class. They're three, they're three over in every class, and we have fourth class, and you're at twenty-seven. And you're only capped at twenty-four.
So with that, addition, you will be able to reduce those.
Correct, yes. Yeah, so we've got a new one coming in next, so, yeah. Yeah, play through it for twenty twenty-one.
Any questions, more questions regarding this? Do you have any more questions regarding here? Alright, then I can make a motion to approve consent in general, nine to thirteen. Right, good, but. Move one second. All in favor? Uh, yes, I'm going to pay the minutes. A A, uh, our meeting on Tuesday, September second, you'll call me when you're out. So, okay. You want to add some thoughts, maybe, thank you all, for taking the time to come, I really want to, Christie's here, because you are our first line, our parents, you know, you interact with us so much. So, we're really, you know, looking forward to you all, knowing this, keeping our initiative, growing child education. Even for the high school, a lot of the students have kids in law school, so, talking up, you know, their parents know this is something really great, uh, for the, um, for the seniors, for our parents. Alright, if there's nothing else?
I'll just say, I think everybody's doing a wonderful job, and hitting the ground running, and falling around, folks on the ground.
Yeah.
In the schools, with the kids, with the teachers, so, I cannot say enough.
See, and have you. Mr. Westside students told us he had last time, uh, attended that, um, five cell. And he was there, and it was very good to see. Appreciate it, most of our students, the majority of our students come from the west side of the city. Matt, everyone there, it's very appreciated. And all you here tonight, I mean, fourteen of you guys, and then we sit up here, and you guys, we see, we see what's going on, we see your smiles, hear the words, and this fact he had to say the night. And we're in this together, you guys, we're fighting this battle together, and, uh, we're here for you, you know that you're here for our students, and we thank you so much. It's very impressive, the whole thing, thank you.
That's like a.
In the past, I was so excited to come to the B's, but I am embarrassed, you guys, so excited, you know, I don't need more, because they kept saying, I saw you on TV. Not on TV. This is annual.
Alright, well, thank you, I'm glad to hear, you're very excited about, you know, the leadership, the principals, um, so we thank you for your commitment, uh, and your energy. It is really, I guess, for our students, and I think I'm skeptical, and, you know, we're just, it's it, we all sit here, we're excited for the, this is a great opportunity to make this a huge school. Thank you for the good times. Alright, the motion to adjourn. Here's the new, is that all, make it.